Good evening. I would like to call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, May 14, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We'll have an invocation by Pastor Ryan Speakman from Living Word Family Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by the Lake Havasu City Military Moms. If you turn on, there's a button in the center. Yes.
This thing on? Hey, there we are. Yay. So, thank you for having me. Always an honor and a privilege. So, let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for tonight. Father God, we just thank you for your presence here tonight, Father God. We thank you for the presence of the Holy Spirit. Father, I pray for a special blessing over Mayor Sheehy and Vice Mayor Lane and all of the council members for being here and making this effort to govern and be authorities over our city. I thank you for special wisdom and understanding over them that they make righteous decisions for our city, Father God. I thank you for each one here that they're here because they have a heart for Lake Havasu City. We all love this city and we proclaim this your city, Father God. This is a city of faith. This is holy ground. Father, we pray for special protection for our police department, special blessing over our police captain who's here tonight, the fire captain, the fire department, all the emergency responders in Lake Havasu, just special protection over them in Jesus' name and a blessing over them for all the city workers, protection and a blessing. Any spirit of darkness that wants to come against our city, we say no in Jesus' name. Again, this is holy ground. Father, we just thank you for blessing this meeting, spirit of peace over this meeting. We say your kingdom come, your will be done on this earth as it is in heaven, and we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. The Military Moms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll now have the Military Moms would like to share a little bit about what your organization does and give us an update.
Well, one of the things that we'd like to tell you about is we have a get some tour that is May 24th, next Friday. Doors open at 6:00. Comedy show starts at 7:00 and the concert starts at 8:30. It'll be, the comedy will be by Tim Colseri from Full Metal Jacket. The concert will be by Matt Ferris. We will be raising funds for the Military Moms, the Disabled American Veterans of Lake Havasu, the Havasu Community Health Foundation, and the Marine Corps League. It'll be held at the Refuge, and if you're interested in tickets, I hope to hear from you.
Hi. I'm the president of Lake Havasu City Military Moms, and I'm also the secretary of the Veterans' Resource Team and a mentor coordinator of services for our Veterans Treatment Court. What Military Moms does is we are an active participant in our Veterans Resource Team, and all the money that is so graciously donated by the citizens of our community is spent to, first thing we do is we send out Girl Scout cookies once a year. Costs us $2,600 a year to send those boxes to our troops that are deployed. They're just now receiving them and we're getting, if you look at our Facebook page, you can see a lot of really, really happy, smiling faces that are out there in the desert with their boxes of cookies. So, it's really rewarding to see that. We also help our veterans here in town that may need their electricity paid, their rent paid, food, gas, a ride somewhere to one of their appointments, a ride to and from the hospital if they're having a procedure. So, 100% of your donations do go back into the community, and we are very blessed to be here in Lake Havasu because everyone here is so very, very generous with our veterans. They help us take very good care of them. That fits in with the Veterans Resource Team, which is all the veteran organizations in town, along with a couple of our car clubs that very graciously donate money that's donated to them when I email them begging for money to help one of our veterans that needs a hand up. So, that's pretty much what we do, and I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything like that. I can answer them, and then if you don't, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Does any member of the council have any questions for the Military Moms? All right, well, again, thank you for all you do for our community. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmembers Cal Sheehy.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Groth.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
I am present.
Thank you. All right, number five on the agenda is the call to the public. This is the opportunity where citizens can address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city. Your comments will be limited to three minutes or less. If you wish to address an item that's already on today's agenda, we recommend you wait until that item comes up on the agenda so we can have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, we'll be able to listen intently to your comments during the call to the public, but since they're not agendized, we wouldn't be able to have any response to those. There is a light indicator box at the podium. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute left, and red is when the three minutes is up. You don't have to sign up to talk at the call to the public, but we do have one person do so. So, we'll start with Ms. Christine Simmons if you want to make your way to the podium and use your time for a call to the public, and then after that, anyone else can make their way to the podium.
Well, hello, Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor and all council members. I appreciate you hearing me tonight. I emailed you about, last week or two ago, about Tannerite. That's what I'm talking about this evening. It's a very explosive subject. I'm representing the homeowners, 99 of which I have signed signatures, which you have a copy of. Actually, I have the original. This is my friend Joan Marshall, and she has experienced the wonderful sounds of those explosive targets, and she's my Vanna White this evening. I'm here because we, our forefathers who designed the city, Lyle Maszendorf took me by the hand and gave me a little history lesson that McCulloch had a vision, and he had on his very original little plans of the city, an equestrian area. And I don't know if you have any idea how many homeowners and horse owners we have in Havasu, and they are no longer able to recrete in the desert where it used to be safe for them to ride their horses without guns blazing and bullets flying, and now explosive devices. So, we're trying to seek back that picturesque desert home that we have and preserve the habitat. It's amazing they use cactus for targets. It's really sad if you go out there. Be safe. I talked to Barry Sullins. He's a ranger. He's informed me that blowing up this Tannerite is against the law. It is a Class A misdemeanor. You go to federal court. If we give the license plate of who is blowing up the Tannerite, they will go knocking on their door.
Ms. Simmons, you're addressing the council, so just, please address the council. I made a call to the public. Thank you.
Okay. I have a quote from Chief Doyle. I saw him here. He was living on Kicking Horse at the time, and he heard this huge explosion, and he ran out thinking it was his neighbor's house and it exploded. No, it was Tannerite in the desert. A four-pound size is called, whoa, a four-pound size is called the Earth Shaker. You have a packet in front of you? I would like to see it banned in town. When you buy Tannerite here in town, they go, oh, it's okay to go explode it up at the top of Bison where all our homes are, where all our horses are. This is unfair to the customer. They're misleading them, and when the customers start getting ticketed by Barry Sullins and our rangers, they're going to be very disappointed. So, I think, why are we selling it if it's against the law and could cause a fire? And our homes are right there. So, please, take a look at the information. We have a reporter here that came to my house. He got some interviews with some of my neighbors, and hopefully you'll see something in the newspaper. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And if anybody wants to sign the petition, I have another one out. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on any matter during the call to Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item six on our agenda is the consent agenda. Would any member of the council want to remove any of the items on the consent agenda for additional discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Koch.
Motion.
Yes, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Item seven is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 7.1 is to announce the vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor, City Council, there are a number of vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. This listing is those of the current and upcoming vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, two regular members. Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members. And the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 7.2 is our city manager's report. Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start off tonight's city manager's report by recognizing some leaders in our community. Mayor Sheehy, you and I had the honor of accompanying the Youth Council at the Center for Future Arizona Democracy Final Showcase. It was in Phoenix, and it was on May 1st. These leaders did a great job representing Lake Havasu City, and they teamed up with Havasu Community Health Foundation and hashtag U Matter to raise awareness for mental health in our community. They took home first place in a competition amongst their peers in the state of Arizona. They competed with Avondale, Tempe, and San Luis. At this time, I'd like to play a short video highlighting their journey and call the members of the Youth Council to the podium so they can tell us about their journey.
We are the Havasu Youth Advisory Council, and this is our journey through the democracy process. When we were asked to compete in democracy, we were eager to make a change in our community through the help of CFA once again. After learning about the design thinking process and relating it back to our community, we talked to our citizens. We had a few ideas floating around, but we didn't have a focus. Then this happened. Hannah was a 14-year-old girl, a classmate, a friend, and loved by many. Hannah and her mother were on their way home on September 17th when they were shot and killed due to a mental health in the family. We lost a family seven months ago due to a mental health issue, and maybe this could have been prevented if we knew the signs and symptoms of this disease. The loss of Hannah was our drive for advocating for mental health. After Hannah's death, we felt the need to look into why something like this could happen in our own community. We spoke with organizations, community members, city council members, and our teachers.
Yeah, find somebody to talk to. Go out and walk. Clear the mind a little bit by restructuring your thoughts.
That is the only way that you can get through situations like this is communicating with somebody in some fashion.
The key is to just be able to provide them with the services that they need. Get them into somebody who can help.
We also appeared at our local radio station to market our idea and get feedback from our community. By doing this, we found that many organizations did support the advocacy of mental health, and through collaborating with them, we could strengthen our impact. It was clear to us, a severe lack of resources for mental illness services was our community need. Using the skills that we had learned during our design thinking process and with help from our mentors, we created a problem tree to clearly visualize our issues at hand, as well as the symptoms they created. By doing this, we were able to come up with solutions that could target each issue and in effect each symptom. After months of looking into viable options, we landed on one that seemed to fit our issue. Our solution was to team up with the Havasu Community Health Foundation, hashtag U Matter, and our city council to put on a community engagement event addressing mental illnesses. Together, we brought in Katie McPherson to talk about the role social media and technology can have on our mental health. To measure the success of the night, we had attendees complete a pre- and post-event survey, and throughout that event, we had the chance to interact with our community, learn from them, and create a space with no stigma. Although this project was a big undertaking, the design process and tools at hand made it not only impactful but easy. The democracy competition is a great platform to test our ability and execute real value in our community. The process makes us more driven to become civically engaged.
Good evening, everyone. We just want to say thank you for helping us with this opportunity, and we're so thankful that we got to work with all of you and work with leaders in our community. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
On April 26th, Arbor Day, the city celebrated with the Havasu High Elementary School by planting trees on the island multipurpose path. Mayor Sheehy proclaimed the day Arbor Day in Lake Havasu City, Arizona, and presented the proclamation to Craig Geary, our Public Works Field Supervisor. The kids ahead of last. Also, on April 26th, Vice Mayor Dave Lane attended the award ceremony for the Science Olympiad. It was sponsored by Altice and SunLink, held at the ASU Lake Havasu, and assisted, and Vice Mayor Lane assisted with handing out the medals. The Science Olympiad featured a STEM competition with students from all of our local elementary schools showcasing their skills and ideas on how to improve the future. Mayor Sheehy and Vice Mayor Dave Lane attended the end-of-the-year PACE, or Patriotic Adventures in Constitutional Education Program and Ceremony on April 30th and May 1st to shake hands and congratulate first through sixth graders that completed the program from Starline, Havasu High, Orl Grande, and Havasu Preparatory Academy. Because it's grown to such a large club over the years, the organization had to host the event over two nights. The PACE organization is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization in Lake Havasu City dedicated to teaching patriotism amongst our youth. PACE has provided free after-school classes for the past seven years, and the classes feature instruction about the founding fathers, famous quotations, patriotic songs, and introduction to the U.S. Constitution and citizenship. Vice Mayor David Lane attended the annual Elks Swim Day at the Aquatic Center on May 4th, and they presented the group with the proclamation to celebrate the BPO Elks National Youth Week. Mayor Sheehy proclaimed the week of May 5th through May 11th as Municipal Clerks Week in Lake Havasu City. The municipal clerk is the oldest among all public servants and provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all levels, and serves as the information center on functions of local government and the community. We appreciate Kelly Williams, Arcela Aquiles, and Shannon Davis in the City Clerk's office. We rely on their professionalism, neutrality, and partiality, and rendering equal service to all. We can't do it without you. This week, we celebrate National Police Week, and the important role our local law enforcement plays in the safeguarding our rights and freedoms in this community. And tomorrow, we recognize the Peace Officers Memorial Day by lowering our flags to half-staff in remembrance of law enforcement officers that were killed in the line of duty. We greatly appreciate the devotion of our law enforcement professionals. In honor of National Police Week, Mayor Sheehy would like to present a proclamation to Police Chief Dan Doyle at this time on behalf of Lake Havasu City.
All right, today, we're going to be doing a proclamation from my office, Office of the Mayor, proclaiming this National Police Week, May 12th through May 18th, 2019. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the Lake Havasu City Police Department plays an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community, and whereas Lake Havasu City Police Department was founded in July of 1979, and in relatively short period of time has grown to become one of the leaders and progressive police services in the state of Arizona. And whereas, Lake Havasu City Police Department members possess strong values that emphasize ethical behavior, principled decision-making, and unparalleled commitment to the community. And whereas, it's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now, therefore, I, Cal Sheehy, Mayor of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2019 as National Police Week in Lake Havasu City, Arizona, and urge citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their communities, protect us through law and order. So, congratulations.
And next week, we celebrate and recognize our National Public Works Week, and that's from May 19th through May 25th, and this is our opportunity to show our appreciation to our local public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels responsible for protecting and maintaining our water and wastewater systems, our airport, our Havasu Mobility and Transit Program, our streets, our washes, traffic operations, vehicle maintenance, parks, and public buildings and grounds. Thank you to all of our public works employees for all your hard work. We have a fun picture here, and to talk about our Parks and Recreation Program, we're asking our residents to slide into Parks and Recreation in either person or online to register for many activities available for kids and teens this summer. The registration opens on Monday, and that's on May 20th. It'll open at 5:00 AM online and 7:00 AM in person at the Lake Havasu City Aquatic Center. If you're registering online, we ask that you ensure the login credentials and everything is going to work before that takes place on Monday morning. If you have any issues, please check with them, and then check with our staff this week. We're available to help you out with some login assistance. Space is very limited, and the programs fill up very, very quickly. So, for more information, please contact the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Department at 453-8686. Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Knutson? All right, we'll move on to number eight on our agenda, the public hearings. 8.1 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License, Mud Shark Brewery, 1095 Aviation Drive. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, Scott Allen Stocking has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Mud Shark Brewery located at 1095 Aviation Drive. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License. Staff recommends approval of this liquor license. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McCoy.
Motion.
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Mud Shark Brewery at 1095 Aviation Drive.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is discussion and possible action, if necessary, to comply with open, excuse me, to comply with Arizona Open Meeting Law following the executive session regarding annual evaluation of the city manager. Possible actions include, but are not limited to, finding of satisfactory or unsatisfactory performance, salary adjustment, or any direction or action necessary to place an item on a future agenda relating to the city manager's evaluation, salary adjustment, or employment Do any members of the council have any comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion.
Vice Mayor Lane, yes.
Based on the favorable outcome of the evaluation of the city manager, I move to direct city staff to draft an employment contract for the city council's consideration at the next city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3, discussion and possible action, if necessary, to comply with Arizona Open Meeting Law following the executive session regarding the annual evaluation of the city magistrate. Possible actions include, but not limited to, finding of satisfactory or unsatisfactory performance, salary adjustment, or any direction or action necessary to place an item on a future agenda relating to the city magistrate's evaluation, salary adjustment, or employment agreement. Do any members of the council have any comments before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion.
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane.
Based on the favorable outcome of the evaluation of the city magistrate, I move to direct city staff to draft an employment contract for the city council's consideration at the next city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is discussion and possible action, if necessary, to comply with Arizona Open Meeting Law following the executive session regarding annual evaluation of city attorney. Possible actions include, but are not limited to, finding of satisfactory or unsatisfactory performance, salary adjustment, or any direction or action necessary to place an item on a future agenda relating to the city attorney's evaluation, salary adjustment, or employment agreement. Is there any comments before I open the public hearing from the council? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion.
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane.
Based on the favorable outcome of the evaluation of the city attorney, I move to direct city staff to draft an employment contract for the city council's consideration at the next city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy. I just have one comment for the public sitting there. It seems like we're rapidly going through this, and you're like, what are you saying? You're not even saying anything. So, this is to comply with the evaluation process for the three employees that work directly for the city council, which is our city manager, Jessica Knutson, our city attorney, Kelly Gary, and our city magistrate, Judge Kalali. So, this will come to our next council meeting for public hearings with the actual content. This is just giving them direction to give us the content back to us. So, with that being said, is there any other comments? We're ready to vote then.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is approved notice of termination of development agreement as against parcels A, B, and C1 at Grand Island Estates. Ms. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in 1996, Lake Havasu City and MCO Properties entered into a development agreement for the development known as Grand Island Estates, which was supplemented in 1998 by a supplementary development agreement. Since that time, the development has been sold, so there's several different parcels a part of that development, and they've all been sold to different developers. Some parcels are approaching full development while others remain untouched. According to the terms of the development agreement, as a whole, it automatically terminates in May of 2028 or on 2013 as to any portion of the property which the developer or owner fails to obtain a permit for development for. There's also one more automatic termination provision as to any lot which has been fully subdivided and individually sold or leased, or sold to the end purchaser or user. So, for the three highlighted parcels above, those three parcels have been terminated from the development agreement by one of those three means. The owner of those three parcels has approached the city and wishes to file this notice of no termination of development agreement, and this is to make it public and clear that they consider themselves to be terminated from that development agreement. City has no, city staff has no concerns or issues with that, but I will note that there's still a planned development zoning that sits on top of the whole development, and so that isn't changed at all by this action. This action is just recognizing that those three parcels have been terminated from just the development agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Gary? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane, yes.
I move to approve the notice of termination of development agreement against parcels A, B, C1 and Grand Island Estates.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point six is approve the memorandum of understanding with the Lake Havasu City, excuse me, with the Lake Havasu Police Officers Association. Chief Doyle.
Mayor, Council, I bring before you the memorandum of understanding with the Police Officers Association. This was established back in 2004 by ordinance, and each year, we sit down with the Police Officers Association, and we go over the MOU, any changes, and then once those are agreed upon, we bring it before council. This year, more of a significant change to the MOU was any redundant language was removed from the MOU. So in other words, any verbiage that was already covered in state statutes, things such as the Police Officers Bill of Rights and other rights that are guaranteed the officers and employees under state statute, federal, city ordinance, and/or city OPPs, was removed. Another significant change was, instead of mandating that we sit down every year, we sit down at request of either the Police Officers Association or by the city. As those of you that have been on council a number of times, you'll note that year after year, when there were no changes, we'd come before you and say, we have the MOU, there are no changes. So in those cases, we don't have to, we don't have to sit down and go over the MOU except at the request of either the association and/or the city. And those are the major changes in the MOU for this year.
Yeah, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Chief Doyle? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? If you could just state your name for the clerk.
I'm Michael Fuller. I am president of the Lake Havasu Police Officers Association. Wasn't really prepared to say anything today, but just thought this would probably be the appropriate time, is that we negotiated this memorandum of understanding, and that comes from an old city ordinance, I think you mentioned, back in 2004, and how we do meet and confer. I would just like to make a statement at this point, I guess if you will, that it is our association's belief that this city ordinance may be a little outdated, potentially outdated, and doesn't maybe incorporate all that the association would like for mutual benefits between the city and the association. I don't have enough time in three minutes to go over everything and what other cities do in their meet and confer, and how they interact with their public safety employees specifically, which is a reason why most agencies do have meet and confer is specific to their public agencies, public safety agencies. So I just would like to maybe just make a statement of potential discussions in the future of updating the meet and confer ordinance that the city has to be mutual beneficial to both the association and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I should have clarified, at public hearings, it's five minutes. So three minutes for a call to the public, five minutes at public hearing. Sorry. So you have some time. Yeah, anything else you want to share with us?
All right. So basically, the reason that I'm getting at this, and I'll just share this real quick brief, is that there is a state statute, ARS 23-1411, which is specifically titled, Public Safety Employee Organizational Rights Definition. What you might guess identifies public safety employee organizational rights, and specifically states that public safety employees of any city has the right to join an employee association, which for us is the Lake Havasu Police Officers Association, and present proposals and testimony to the governing body of that city, and it does not compel or prohibit in any manner an employee wage or benefit negotiation. And so a lot of cities over the years have enacted meet and confer policies to deal directly with their fire and police officer associations. It is not something that you routinely see that involves every city employee, much like our cities does. I am not aware of the other city working groups that do enter into meet and confer other than police and fire. So, you know, again, we're just, at this point, you know, there's a lot of things being proposed in this next year with the positional analysis with, I've heard rumors of merit-based and all these things that may potentially need to be discussed, and our current wording of the MOU, we have to start this process and enter into what we want to see differently in the next year, beginning September 15th, which is very close. Most meet and confer policies are later in the year prior to the new calendar year, and then they enter into these negotiations during the budget process typically. And we're well advanced of that, and doesn't really give us time to really hit the issues that are needed. So again, just want to make note of it, and just felt it was a good time since we are talking about this year's meet and confer. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do any members of the council have any additional questions? Do I entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Lake Havasu Police Officers Association and authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item eight point seven, approve the memorandum of understanding with the Lake Havasu Professional Firefighters. Chief Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm delighted to get this done this week because next week I will be sliding into Parks and Rec. So glad to get this out of the way. This is, I would call, a companion item, obviously, to the last one. The conversation with the city manager and the firefighter association was very similar. You'll note probably a significant reduction for the same reasons, going through and eliminating really a lot of duplicated language. So what was the MOU of 20 pages of the past is now down to about 12, I think it is. It's essentially removing several articles that, like I said, are really duplication of effort and is essentially the exact same as the Police Officers Association for the most part. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Does any member of the council have any questions for Chief Davis? Seeing none, well, this is a public hearing. We will open up the public hearing at this time. Does anyone want to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Lake Havasu Professional Firefighters effective July 1st, 2019, and authorize the city manager and the fire chief to execute the memorandum of understanding on behalf of Lake Havasu City.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Groth?
If you may, just to ask a question, it's kind of more for clarification because these are companion items. The MOU is very similar for both the police department and for the fire department, and they both include the same language, basically, under Article 8. I don't know if it's the same article in the police department, but 8.1, which is the city conducting a salary survey biennially on even-numbered years. And there's some other language, you got to have a minimum of three unit member positions to be determined by the association, and other positions can be surveyed at the discretion of the city. Can I ask, how does the biennial requirement for both of these MOUs fit into the positional analysis survey that we're doing? And in capturing that biennial requirement? This is probably a city manager question. Mr. City Manager, if I may ask you?
Sure. Mayor Sheehy, Councilmember Groth, the, while both include an analysis of compensation, they're, they are independent of each other. So whether or not we do a positional analysis, the MOU identifies that we do this for the three positions, both in police and fire, on, as indicated in the MOU. So, but what the recent survey shows us that there is a need for us to take a look at positional analysis study, to take a look at compensation and job titles and our compensation structure as a whole. So to some degree, the salary survey that you see identified in the MOU confirms that we need to, we need to, we need to fix our system.
I appreciate that. Mr. City Manager, I was kind of looking as a point of question about, you know, the, when it's done, kind of. So you have a biennial survey, but it's very specific here. It says on even-numbered years, and we're in 2019. And then my other question, I noticed that neither one of these MOUs, not that it's a detraction or anything, but there's really no language as to when that has to be completed for purposes of inclusion into the municipal budget process.
Yeah, Mayor Sheehy, Councilmember Groth, in Section 8.2, it talks about that the city manager will present that as part of the budget process. So that's the, that's the clarity there. That was, the findings of the survey were sent to council, was it three weeks ago?
Yes.
Right before the last CIP work session. So that was, to me, that, that fit the standard that's identified in the MOU as part of that budget process.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. That was my question.
Is there any additional questions before we open the public hearing? Did I open the public hearing? I closed the public hearing? I've done that a lot tonight. So, all right, great. So we have, oh, we have a motion and a second. All right. Any other comments? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight point eight, award the bid for the sale of city-owned parcel L of tract 2208, block 13, located at 3702 Indian Hills Drive to Danny T. and Tracy A. Page Trust, APN 111-18-298. Mr. Schmeling.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Staff received an application for the possible purchase of the 3702 Indian Hills in August of 2018. The property generally located in the southeastern corner of the community. Wrong way. Here you can see in the aerial photo, it's 5.16 acres, surrounded by residential properties near the corner of Oro Grande Boulevard and Bonavista Avenue. This is the tract map, once again, 5.16 acres, totally surrounded by traditional residential lots. We accepted bids through March 27th. The appraisal came in at 205,000 value. We received one bid on the property. Hold on, let me get into the zoning. Property is zoned R1. Property is right here, surrounded on three sides by R1, by multifamily along Bonavista. The bid came in at 214,400, and we asked council to award the bid. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Schmeling? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to award the bid for the sale of city real property parcel L of tract 2208, block 13, APN 111-18-298, in the amount of 214,400 to Danny T. and Tracy A. Page Trust.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point nine is award bid for the sale of city-owned tract 2278, block 9, lot 10, APN 115-06-158, located at 1830 Cabana Drive to AP Mortgage Route LLC. Mr. Schmeling.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, staff received an application for the possible purchase of city-owned property at 1830 Cabana Drive. It was in August as well of 2018. Properties in the northwest portion of the community. You can see it here, it's just a traditional residential lot, about 12,500 square feet. Once again, we accepted bids through March 27th. There it is on the tract map, adjacent to another city parcel. Here is the zoning. It's zoned R1 as well as all the properties in the surrounding area. The P1 parcel is a city-owned parcel that is adjacent to the residential subdivision. The appraisal came in at 135,000. We received one bid, and the bid was at 137,850 and 25 cents, and we asked council, we asked that council to award the bid. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of the council? I have a question maybe of the city manager. We talked a little bit about when we sell city-owned properties, what we do with those funds, if you could maybe just give an overview for the public's benefit.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The funds that are collected through the sale of these properties, which, by the way, the city, we go through and identify a list of available properties for sale. So any member of the public that wants to approach the city and look at some of the list of properties that are available for sale, that's something that's ongoing. But the funds that are collected through the sale of these two properties and other additional properties that have happened in the past and will again in the future are used for one-time purchases, and we've kind of earmarked some of those funds for the purchase, future purchase of additional property down the road. And so that's where the funds are dedicated towards that or any time, one-time expenses moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the council before I open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to award the bid for the sale of city real property tract 2278, block 9, lot 10, APN 115-06-158, in the amount of 137,850 and 25 cents to AP Mortgage Route LLC.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point 10 is adopt ordinance number 19-1218, approving a major amendment to the Sailing Hawks Plan Development, PD 01-001, amending Phase 3, the Cove Sailing Hawks, tract 2364, lot 27, APN 115-29-027A, general development plan, reducing the density from 63 lots to 22 residential lots. Mr. Schmeling.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The 13-acre parcel is located in the northwestern portion of the community, more specifically at the corner of Lundenbridge Road and Sailing Hawks Drive. It is a part of what we know as the original Sailing Hawks development, which included 56 acres. We have the terraces here, which was Phase 1. We have the ridge, and this is the subject property of the coves. Whoop, I got a better picture. Here's the aerial photo. We have the ridge here, as I was saying, the coves. This is the subject of tonight's discussion, and Mesquite Bay. The property was originally approved in 2005 for 44 patio homes and 40 townhomes. And those townhomes, by the way, were two-story, proposed at that time. It was amended in 2013, and it was approved for, or changed, to 32 patio homes and 31 townhomes. This is the approved plat that's, that's on file right now for that property. The proposal this evening is a reduction from the 63 lots that were approved in 2013 to 22 single-family lots. The private street runs along the eastern boundary of the property, comes out in a cul-de-sac. It is, if you look at the side-by-side comparison, it's very similar to the plat that was approved back in 2013. You can see the extension of the cul-de-sac a little bit here, a little longer. You can see the extension of the cul-de-sac a little bit here, a little longer. The removal of this portion of the cul-de-sac, obviously the consolidation of the lots going from 63 down to 22. Very similar street design, very similar building elevations. And if you happen to drive by the site, you probably saw a little activity. There is an active grading plan right now, active grading permit right now, based on a grading plan, and it's being graded to the adopted, or the approved 2013 grading plan. There were five conditions of approval that were included in your packet. After lengthy discussion at the planning commission, one of those conditions was changed. So I put the conditions as modified by the commission. Five conditions, like I said, four of them remain the same, the one in red was the one that changed as a result of the discussion. The, well, I'll leave it at that. That concludes my portion of the presentation, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Schmeling? I believe the applicants here, do they want to make a presentation?
My name is Michael Gordon, the applicant on this project with Ezra Land Group, here on behalf of the owner tonight. Stuart did a good job of kind of giving a summary of kind of where it's at today. We put together just a little slideshow. I'm going to share just a little bit more history on this project. As some of you may know, this goes back a long way, obviously, the original project. Sailing Hawks itself encompasses five different neighborhoods that were originally planned as part of a master plan community back in the early 2000s. In 2005, like Stuart mentioned, the project was entitled and approved for 44 two-story, I'm sorry, 44 single-story patio homes and 42-story townhomes. One thing I'm just going to talk a little bit about because it's important, the conditions you saw is the lot elevations. At that time, lot elevations were assigned to all of the lots, all of the upper elevation lots, the lots that affect the neighboring property to the east, which is the Ridge project that is developed. This project, too, for your information, again, five neighborhoods in Sailing Hawks, three of which have been developed or are finishing development. This will be the fourth that has started development with the grading that Stuart mentioned. There's one fifth piece off to the north or to the south that has not yet broken ground. This sits down along Leonard Bridge Road with the Ridge Townhomes adjacent to the east. Again, that was the original approval. When the economy changed, the property changed hands, and after that, back in, ultimately in 2014, it went through a plan development amendment as well, as Stuart mentioned, kind of just some slight modifications to that original plan. Still had a combination of the small lots and the larger, and the single-family patio home type lots. Still had 63 total sites. And if you compare elevations that were approved with that approval, very consistent elevation-wise with the original elevations that were approved. That plan, when it was approved in 2014, it was approved, the final plat has been approved by council, and at the time, the improvement drawings, the water sewer streets and all the improvement drawings were also engineered, presented, and received approval by staff. Recently, the owner did pull, again, flash forward now, even a new owner from when the 2014 plan was approved. The new owner has since pulled the permits and started the grading process on the property. When that started, it kind of triggered a chain reaction of some concern with neighbors over potential views and potential lot elevations. During that process, we had a number of discussions with neighbors, and at the same time, looking at the plan that was approved and the plans that were pulled. The high-density project that was proposed and approved at the time with 63 units really didn't make the most sense, because you had, really, and I'll compare it to one of the other neighborhoods in Sailing Hawks, the Mesquite Bay neighborhood to the south, was a very similar plan to the currently approved plan, combination of really small lots and really big lots. Well, it didn't build out that way. It ended up, you know, lots got tied together, lots got modified, lots got changed, and you had a significant reduction of density, probably the wrong way, by, you know, consolidation over time and moving things around. As the owner started working on this project, realized that that's probably where this was going to end up, if they just proceeded with building it as is, that lots would end up getting tied together. The little tiny lots with zero setbacks didn't make much sense, stuffed in the middle of everything else. And so, as discussion started with the neighbors, it also made sense to bring this forward and talk about an overall change to the plan. And that's what's before you tonight, is a proposed PD amendment that encompasses those changes, along with some changes that were made elevation-wise to be good neighbors and satisfy neighbors' concerns. But like you see on the screen right now, it's a major reduction from 63 units down to 22 units. Instead of a combination of little homes and big homes and everything stuffed really close together, the plan now has 22 large, single-family lots. So you have, you know, yes, you'll have larger homes, but you'll have significantly less traffic, significantly less rooftops, and things will be spread out a little bit more. As Stuart mentioned, when you look at the plan side-by-side, the street configuration, the general layout and grading of the sites are still the same. There's a lower terrace along Leonard Bridge Road. There's an upper terrace that adjoins the Ridge project to the east. So that's the plan that the owner would like to move forward with, and that's what's before you today. When we first went down this path and presented the proposed amendment to the neighbors, we had a public meeting at the townhome at the Ridge project next door. In general, the neighbors were pleased with the change in the plan in terms of the reduction in density and then the new configuration of what's proposed. It did trigger a lot of discussion over elevations, over lot grades. It triggered some discussion that was discussed in great detail at the Planning and Zoning Commission last month. And really, what it started to point out is that some folks felt that grades maybe were different than what was approved. Along the way, the intent of this owner was to try and build a better community, try and fit in the neighborhood, and try and, you know, do what they could to accommodate those concerns. At the end of the day, and we can get into the details of this if we need to, after working with the neighbors, really where we ended up is a couple of things. We reduced the density, obviously, as mentioned. We lowered the elevations of all of the upper terrace lots from the approved elevations, got lowered anywhere from a foot to two and a half feet. And that was really to try and target a baseline elevation that some of the neighbors felt that they were, or that these properties were required to be at. The end of the day, really wasn't, isn't the case, and if you really look back at the specifics, but nonetheless, we wanted to try and meet that if we could without creating negative impacts to this proposed development. We were able to do that, to achieve most of that, and that's what's before you today. At the same time, we also adjusted a few lot line angles to line up with the angle of the lots of the existing townhomes, which allows for better view corridors, if you will, or better view angles between the future homes that'll be developed and the existing homes. So that's kind of a summary of where we were at. Since the last council, or since the planning and zoning meeting, it obviously was approved at planning and zoning. There has been some continued discussion with the neighbors. Stuart, if you don't mind, maybe, yeah, just to kind of compare what was approved before versus what's in front of you today. You can see on that upper terrace, the lots on the, what would be the south end, were lowered around two and a half feet. The lots across the middle, which are the ones adjacent to a majority of the Ridge Townhomes on the bottom portion of the screen, were lowered an average of 1.2 feet. And the lots out on that cul-de-sac to the west were lowered an average of a foot. Those grades, the grades that immediately adjoin the Ridge Townhome folks, really achieved the grades that they were hoping that they would be getting out of it, but the grades in the cul-de-sac were still higher than what they had hoped for. Nonetheless, it was less than what was, is currently approved and what the current plans have approval for. Since that meeting, again, there's been some discussions. I think the developer of the Ridge will probably speak tonight. At that meeting, it was inferred that potentially, you know, at this point, we've done a lot and to try and accommodate their concerns and their needs, both on elevation as well as putting a maximum, and that was the condition Stuart pointed to, that was added, putting a maximum build height on those lots, something that wasn't ever in any of the previous approvals, to maximize the build height above those elevations to 15 feet. It was something that was discussed with the neighbors. It was something that was agreed to and committed to, and so at the planning and zoning meeting, we put that condition on these lots as well. Since then, there still has been some concern or some rumblings of the neighbors. It was discussed at planning and zoning about, well, what if, what if we, the neighbors, helped with the cost of lowering some of those lots? And so there are some discussions ongoing on potentially doing a few other things to satisfy their concerns, if they're willing to assist with the cost of some of those things. But today, we're before you with the plan that was presented and approved at planning and zoning. We intend to try and move forward with that plan, and if, and I'll let Mr. Atkins speak to this if he wishes, there is an agreement that has been put together. It's not signed and executed to where they're going to potentially assist with some costs to lower a few of the lots that are still of a concern. The applicant is on board with that, if they're willing to cover those costs. So if we arrive at that, we will put additional restrictions on what would be approved tonight. That's something that would be deed restricted on the property, would be presented to staff if and when that comes to fruition, to further lower a few of the lots. That's kind of as quick a summary of everything as I can put together. Be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Gordon?
Just want to clarify, so these, this comparison plan, these elevations are lower than what the previously approved plan was?
Correct. So all of the grades that are on the PD amendment that's before you has specific lot grades for every single one of the 22 lots, all of which, on the upper terrace elevation, the ones that had previous lot elevations assigned in 2005, also reassigned in 2014, all of these grades are lower than the previous approvals and the current approvals.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Groth?
May I inquire, I mean, made a lot of changes from what was originally approved and, you know, the lowering anywhere from a foot to two and a half feet, that probably worked out pretty well for the people who were concerned about their view corridors. And then you have a 35% reduction. Did you get any, or what was your sense of what they were feeling about their view corridors? Now, the fact is, nobody's actually entitled to that, but you're working collaboratively with them to preserve that for them, and there's a 35% reduction here, which seems to benefit, you know, what the development probably would ultimately become anyways, but also give those landowners some certainty
Right.
For their investments, which are significant investments.
Absolutely.
And so what was your sense of how that was received?
I think, like I mentioned before, when we had the public meeting and most of the residents of the Ridge were in the room, we had a very good, open conversation about that. I think they were all in favor of the reduced density of, you know, the proposed plan. Obviously, having the proposed plan in front of their homes versus what's currently approved is probably a lot less impactful long-term, and obviously, anything lower is going to be less impactful to the views and the values. There was some, a lot of this just stems from what they were, what they were told, sold, felt, from previous discussions, from things in staff reports, from things in past discussions that they felt the homes in front of them would never be beyond a certain elevation in height. When you look back at, which we did at the planning and zoning meeting, and look back at the approved elevations that were pretty clear in city records and stuff, it's not exactly that cut and dry that they were hoping it was. So, again, trying to be a good neighbor, trying to come into a piece of property that's been sitting vacant for a long time, the goal of the owner is to get in here, get this thing built. It's a beautiful setting right along the shore of the lake. Want to get in, get it done. It's not good for anybody to end up, you know, going back and forth and having a lot of concern in the public over this or that. So the goal was to just try and be a good neighbor, come in, make some concessions if we could, because for us, we still had to come through this process to change the plan. We wanted to reduce the density. We wanted to create a better plan for the project. We had to come before a public hearing to do that, and so obviously, if we could accommodate some of their concerns to make this process go easier, that was our goal.
May I follow up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One quick question. So I really appreciate all the work that your group has done to try and reach out to those landowners, those homeowners, and explain all these different changes, because, you know, they would be properly concerned. I understand where they're coming from. Do you have a sense of, I mean, I think I heard you say 15-foot maximum height from the new elevations that we're proposing here? If you hadn't done the lowering of these elevations and had just gone with what was already approved, what was the maximum elevation? Do you recall that, sir?
Well, the underlying zoning for this parcel is, it's an R4 PD, and R4 has a maximum build height of 30 feet.
So it could have been anywhere from 30 to 32 and a half feet higher, the roofs that they would have been looking at, essentially. Oh, wait, minus the 15.
Correct.
Okay, got it, right.
Yes.
So that's a, that's a significant change. I mean, I can't visualize that, but did you have some sort of visual presentation that you provided to them?
No, we just talked through the elevations, and, I mean, they could stand on their patios and look down at the lots that were being graded. Again, the grading permit was pulled, and the grades of this plan or the proposed plan are very similar to what was being graded. So it was pretty visual in the field what those impacts, you know, might be at 15 or more feet.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, are there any other questions? Mr. Gordon? All right, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing at this time. If anyone would like to address the city council on this matter, you can just make your way up to the podium, state your name for the record. Does anyone want to address the city council? I thought this was the item. I thought this is what everyone was sitting in the room for. And now you just let me down. All right. Yeah, Mr. Atkins, if you just state your name and...
Just because you're looking for somebody to speak, I'll come up. My name is Ryan Atkins. I'm the developer of the Ridge at Sailing Hawks above. As you've all discussed, there was some relatively heated discussions regarding elevations over the course of this project rezoning or restructuring. The developers below have been very helpful. They've been working well with us. Our homeowners are about as satisfied as I believe they could be. As Michael, Mr. Gordon, did mention, we do have some other agreements we're working on in place to help out even more that they're, the development group below seems to be willing to work with, and we appreciate that. All in all, we're in support of the current plan. We have nothing to argue about with that. I think it's an improvement, and it'll be nice to see something moving forward. You know, our homeowners have been fortunate to, for them, over the last several years, that nothing's happened. They've had the pristine and molested view over the years, and of course, everybody hoped that might last forever, which we all know wasn't the case. So to see something moving forward and at least know what is happening now, and to know the elevations that we're working with, and that the neighbors have been good neighbors and been working with us, we appreciate that, and we support the project at this point.
Excellent, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Since it sounds like everyone's patiently waiting to hear about the water booster stations, I would like to make a motion.
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 19-1218, approving a major amendment to the Sailing Hawks Plan Development 01-001, the coves at Sailing Hawks, amending the general development plan, reducing the density from 63 lots to 22 residential lots.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second the motion and offer just a small snippet and observation. I've lived in communities and worked on city council in communities where getting developers to develop is like getting blood from a stone. It's really hard. And here, we have a lot of development that's taking place on, and I'm actually watching developers work with other developers in the community to do the right thing, and so I just take my hat off, and I think it's fabulous.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Groth. Before we go to vote, I would just like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did a really, really great job. I attended that Planning and Zoning Commission to really work things through. And also, Mr. Gordon, to you and your group, thank you for working with the neighbors. It's definitely appreciated, and it's how we can all work together to do good things for, like, Havasu to move us forward. So, thank you. With that, we have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote. The technology does this to us sometimes. So slow down, you're moving too fast. The technology does this to us sometimes, so slow down, you're moving too fast.
I'm sorry, we'll have to do a verbal vote.
Okay, all at once or roll call, or just all? All at once? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Oh geez, I'm glad I remember that, yeah. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Congratulations to the developer. We're going to switch and go to item eight point, eight point one-two first, so eight point twelve, and then we'll come back and do eight point eleven. So the first item that we're going to talk about again is eight point one-two, so if you want to properly get to where you're at on your agenda. It's a ward bid for the Water Booster Station One-C replacement and tank rehabilitation project to technology construction. Mr. Salisbury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Before you tonight, I'm here to bring the construction contract for the Water Booster Station and Tank Replacement. The pump station was constructed in nineteen seventy-two. The steel tank was constructed in nineteen eighty. Last coating operation was performed in two thousand and five. This tank helps provide water to the southern third of the city. It involves a replacement and upgrade of the pump station, rehabilitation and recoding of a one-million-gallon tank. Pump station and mechanical components are reaching the end of their serviceable life. The interior and exterior coating of tank S1C twenty-four are deteriorating and need replacement. It's a three-hundred-day contract duration from May twenty-nineteen to March twenty-twenty. Bid opening was held on April seventeenth. The low bidder was Technology Construction, Inc., for three million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is the portion of the city that this tank and booster station serve. So it's a very large portion of the city. This is the site, this is the actual tank that we will be recoding. You can see the booster station in the middle, that's going to get reconfigured and moved over to the southwest side of tank S1C twenty-five. This is the current condition of some of the roof rafters inside the tank. This is the condition of the walls, as you can see, it's fairly deteriorated. There's also a center column, if you look at the left upper picture. We're not sure if it was, we think it was built like this, but we need to fix that up. So, it's not plum at all, and it's not as strong as it could be. And the lower right portion is the condition of the floor and the lower walls. This is the current configuration of the pumps out there. We have two electric pumps and one motor-driven pump. This motor is older technology. If you notice something about it, something you probably see outside your home, it's gas-driven. So this creates a hazard in the yard, and we need to update this. We can run all of these pumps off of a single generator if we switch them over to electric rather than having this one backup. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you. So it's one-third of the city is covered by this one?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that's huge. And how many tanks, we have, we have like twelve, how many tanks do we have, total?
Twelve or sixteen.
Twelve or someone, yeah.
Twenty-six, yes, yes.
That's a workhorse.
Yeah.
All right, any questions of the council? For Mr. Salisbury, Mr. Groth?
Mr. Mayor, I will try to keep it short because you know how I love water infrastructure, you know? But can you, can you speak to a little bit, you know, we saw a little bit of rust happening up in the rafters, obviously, and the ventilation system that we have in this tank and what that looks like?
Sure, let me go back a few slides. Okay, the ventilation system are just simple openings that we have in, around the top and at the top. As I'm sure you're aware, this is where the chlorine and stuff accumulates, so this is where the bulk of the attack happens, so to speak, chemical attack. And the stuff below the surface of the water doesn't corrode quite as fast, but this, this, it's, it's pretty standard construction for one of these tanks.
And at the center, in the middle, were the non-plum, what is that, what do we got up there? I couldn't see it, I wanted to look at that, and I was there, but I can see there's, I can see from the overhead.
Yeah, you can see it here, there's a vent at the top of these.
Okay, does that, just out of curiosity, does that pull? Look into the immediacy of that vent around it, maybe that's why it was non-plum, I mean, I don't know.
Yes, we did take the top off and take a look at that. We feel it was constructed that way, with the unplum condition. The, we're not sure why, it was constructed back in the seventies, so.
You couldn't deduce the actual reason for that. As I remove this over to taking the natural gas off, we're going to have luck, that'll be fed in by electricity, there's not going to be like a photovoltaic setup out there, that's just going to be standard electricity when we get off the grid. Okay, and do you have an idea how long it'll take them to do this?
Three hundred days is the contract duration.
Three hundred days?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a sense of how much time there will actually be people in and out of there? Because some of that's going to be project management days and meetings and this and that and the other.
As far as the actual coating portion, those.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what it's going to be like for the neighbors, obviously, there's a lot of neighbors.
Oh, yes, sir. The coating portion probably be a couple of months' worth of it, and then reconstructing the actual components will take much longer, the digging of the pipes and reconfiguring the pump station. The, we're actually moving the pump station, so the loud word you hear from the mechanical components, over to this western portion that you can see right here. This moves it further away from homes, so there will be less noise impact from the operation day-to-day to the residents there.
Well, good, so we'll probably get quieter pumps and we're going to place them further away from residents, so it's quieter for them, because these things do make noise.
Exactly.
Okay, and ballpark, just out of curiosity, this will be my last question on this one, I promise, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, like, this is a big tank, and it feeds a huge, huge chunk of our city, including my own part where I live, you know? So what I was just curious about, this is kind of a trivia question, it's not really germane to this, but how many days' supply of water would that be for the area that it serves if that tank's full? Roughly, ballpark, you know, I mean, you weren't ready for that question, and you probably didn't need to be, but in your expertise.
Probably roughly about a week, two weeks? Twenty percent, twenty percent of the area is what it serves.
Okay, I'll go with that, I'll have to do some mental gymnastics on that answer, but thank you very much, thanks. That's it, I promise I will keep it short, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilmember Groth, in our companion item, our next item, it's five weeks total for the coating area, and we'll address that in our next item. Is there any other comments from council? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
Show them the right one. I move toward the base bid, Schedule A, B, and D, for the Water Booster Station One-C replacement and tank rehabilitation project to Technology Construction Incorporated.
I'll gladly second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Groth. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. We'll see if we're ready to, oh, it's looking good. Yeah, yeah, looking good.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move back to item eight point one-one, and that's award agreement for professional services, construction management, to Atkins North America, Inc., for the Water Booster Station One-C replacement and tank rehabilitation project. Mr. Salisbury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. This contract is for the construction management portion of the construction of this tank. It'll include professional services, full-time inspection, post-design engineering support, and contract closeout services for the duration of the replacement and upgrade of the pump station and the rehabilitation and recoding of the one-million-gallon tank. This is also for three hundred calendar days, for four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do any members of the council have any questions? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
I move to award the agreement for professional services to Atkins North America, Inc., for the Water Booster Station One-C replacement and tank rehabilitation project. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is item nine, current events. Do any of the council members have any council committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to our final call to the public. Would anyone like to address the city council at the call to the public on any matter within our jurisdiction? We're back to three minutes now, call to the public's three minutes, public hearing's five minutes. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Number eleven, do any council members have any, excuse me, number eleven is our future meetings. Our next meeting is this Thursday, May sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at nine AM. That's a budget work session, so that'll be here in the council chambers this Thursday, nine AM. It'll be televised, or we encourage you to participate and join us for that conversation. And then on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at six PM, is our next regular meeting, again, here in the council chambers. Item twelve is future discussion items, does any council member have any future discussion items? Seeing none, we'll move on to thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second, we are adjourned, thanks for being here.